I haven't seen your notes yet. You're summary of our two, because I really want it. No, but I want you to.
I would like to call the meeting in order, and if we can all stand for a question.
The religions to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Justin Rock.
Here.
David Glave is absent. Excuse. Korean Dudo.
Nicole Howard.
Molly Keane.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
Miss Wheeler.
Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
There are none.
Perfect. Consent agenda. While we're waiting for Mary Ann, I would like to thank Robert and all the staff. We were very fortunate to go on a nice little tour of our lovely community. A lot of great information, things, you know, I've been here all my life, but there was a lot of good information that we got from, and I wanted to just tell each and every one of you, thank you for your time, and thank you for all the council and budget committees members that were able to go as well.
The observer was in attendance. They'll probably write a story and you can read that.
I don't, I can't remember everything I saw.
It was very good. Thank you, though. All right, now we will move back into the consent agenda. Is there any items that need to be polled for discussion, or do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. This portion will be public comments. If any citizen would like to step to the podium and speak on any non-agenda items, this is the time. You do have a three-minute timeline, and please sign in up there at podium when you do step up. Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Cody Dre. I'm a resident of La Grande. I grew up in La Grande. I went to elementary school at Central and to the middle school here and high school. I now have four kids of my own, three of them attend Central. I like to talk about sidewalks and just safety in general. We walk our kids to school typically. Some of our concern, we live, we lived up until recently off of Oak and Spring in that area. Most of the routes to school that way, the sidewalks are either patchy or nonexistent. Some blocks have them, some blocks don't, but it forces the kids to have to go out into the street. Part of the concern is that Oak Street feeds directly into the high school parking lot and also is part of the route for some going to the hospital in the morning for work. So there are a lot of people coming to work in a hurry, coming to school in a hurry. Many of those intersections are unmarked, and it's forcing the children to walk in the street. Fortunately, my wife and I typically can walk with our kids, but I do always often see small children, first, second, third graders, walking without a parent. So that's just a concern I wanted to bring your attention. I care about the community and obviously the safety of our children, as obviously all of you do as well, and want to bring awareness to it and see if there's anything that we can do to improve the situation, whether it's signage, awareness, crosswalks. In our walk to school, there are no crosswalks, and most of the intersections are, like I said, unmarked. With that area predominantly having the main three schools and also the hospital, I think it's important to consider. Thank you also for your time.
Thank you for your talk.
Kyle, did we, did we? No, I had a question for our Public Works. I thought we were gonna get signage in that neighborhood.
I think they're still working on it. It's on our to-do list.
It is on the to-do list.
Yeah, to-do list on crosswalks, curb painting, cracked ceiling, everything else. It's on the list, so.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Because I thought we were.
It hasn't fallen off.
All right. So we don't have a timetable or anything?
I don't have a, I don't have a timetable of like, we'll be there next Thursday, but you know.
Before school starts next year?
You know, I think, I'm thinking ahead to what we've got going on. I think depending on, well, yeah, I think for the signage, kind of the thing we've talked about with those intersections where we're going to do some investigating on the yield signs to see if we see any differences in the reporting, that for sure. Crosswalks, we're talking like, if we're gonna start installing crosswalks on residential roads, that's a, that's a huge change that we're gonna have to look into. We don't anticipate doing that for residential. We do for like collectors and arterials, so we're talking like Second Streets, maybe like Walnut or Sunset, those kinds of streets, the high-volume roads. And it's hard to tell where we want to put those until Sunset reopens and we see what the traffic, traffic patterns are gonna be in the future, so. So yes, I would see some signage changes. I don't know that I see any sidewalk or crosswalk stuff other than what we already have planned.
What makes a crosswalk hard?
Uh, mainly because you have to either do painting every year, so once you establish it, it is, we're gonna do it every year. So there's a few options. Right now, we're currently looking at, we're gonna try and go to the state and borrow, they have what's called a pavement etcher, or it's kind of a grinder where you can actually inset a burn down. We're hoping that that may delay some of the maintenance. So cost-wise, paint's not that much, but when you're getting a two-to-three man crew who's going around for half the winter painting this city, it takes away from some of the other stuff, and it's just never been one of those, you know, this is one of our, our high priorities.
Kyle, does, does Second Street have all sidewalks?
No. So we started on Adams, we are to K. So not this June, but the following June in the budget, we'll be opening K to H. Generally, if we need to, we'll redo those sidewalks. I haven't seen the design on that one yet to see if any of the grades in the street are gonna change enough to where we're gonna force sidewalks, but we also have money in the budget where we're looking at where are those high complaint areas that we can maybe address some, some of the smaller projects. It's not gonna replace sidewalks on both sides of Second Street.
But did you say that from Adams to H, there's sidewalk?
All sidewalk and all ramps were replaced and are ADA compliant.
So when the school is on?
The corner of K and Second is that northwest, or it would be the northeast corner of the high school.
Okay, but the side, the high school has sidewalk?
Uh, yes, on their side.
On one side from K through H, there's sidewalk?
Yes, it's the opposite side. So most of, most of the testimony that you guys will hear will be the northwest corner of Second and H, which is a residential house, never had a sidewalk, never had ramps.
So it's just that like couple houses in there or?
It's like one house and the rest of the block is unimproved.
Okay.
So that's one of the issues is if there's no improvement, you can't request the sidewalks be built, and so that's where we're at.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom. Any more public comments?
No public comments.
Perfect.
Well, I'm also here, hi, everyone. Thank you for all being here and helping our community. I'm also a parent of two boys at Central, and we ride our bikes and walk most, most of the time, you know, pending bad weather. And I also am part of a group that are concerned about some of the sidewalk safety stuff, so I don't wanna like reiterate, but I do think it's ironic. We have, we were in the same neighborhood, and, and it is kind of tricky, and I do wanna point out a spot in our neighborhood. It's the bottom of two steep hills. You probably have heard about it. My uncle, actually, it was in an accident there because it's unmarked. It's Cedar and Main, right? Yeah. I, I have two kids who really don't always listen to me when I'm like, stop, but you know, they're going down a hill really fast on a bike, and it's just terrifying, really, because you know, you just never know. So they've, they've learned, and they're really careful, but I think to help encourage our kids to be healthier and move more, I think it helps to have a city that encourages that movement. And even, you know, there is safe routes to school. I think it's something that the city has sponsored. And honestly, I've seen some stuff about that, but I haven't seen a whole lot about it, and I just wondered if there's a way we can encourage more of that, you know, like small investment on the city's part to help. I mean, there's hundreds, it feels like there's hundreds of cars at Central dropping kids off when maybe they're only doing it because they're afraid of the street, you know? And I know, you know, it's kind of scary. I can take my kids to, to school, but man, wouldn't it be great? I walk to school every day, a mile, you know, and I'm old, and I know it's not that time, but maybe it could be, you know? So anyway, I just thought I'd, I, I won't be the first, this won't be the first time I show up, or the last time, I mean. It's so like, there's a microphone, and I'm so nervous, but um, I just think that would be really great for our community, you know, to think about the health of our community and the ways that we can support that. It's not a lot. I don't think of an investment, but yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, would you mind stating your name for the reference?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Anne McNamee.
Good evening, councilmen and women. My name is Jake Severt. I'm running for position three of Union County Commissioners. I just thought I'd take this opportunity to introduce myself, give a little background. Being born and raised, well, born in Baker, raised here in La Grande, attending all the schools in La Grande School District, graduating La Grande High School in 1997, and then further on graduating at Eastern through the Oregon State University Ag program in 2002. I have a relevant perception of what this community has as values and traditions, and would like to be a representative for the county and not only just the county, but all rural communities within this county, including La Grande, because I feel like La Grande is still a rural community. Most of my background and focus will be on agriculture and natural resources. I've said it 100 times and will probably say it a million more times, but I feel that those issues are the backbone and foundation of any economy, and they're the, especially rural economies such as ours. If, if we didn't have businesses such as Woodgrain in our community, what would La Grande be? Thankfully, we have other industry here, but that is my main focus, is to protect the ag community and natural resources that we have, so that we all can enjoy and wake up and drink our coffee and look at the stunning views we have in this valley, Mount Emily and Mira being one of those. So I would just like to take this time to introduce myself, let you know who I am, and if you have any further questions or comments, look me up, and I'd be more than happy to talk with y'all. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Nope. All right, we will move on to our public hearing. We only have one this evening, the public hearing and second reading by title only for proposed ordinance adopting and enacting new codes of ordinances. The public hearing is still open for the ordinance to be read at a second time by title only, considered for adoption, and that the rules of order for the public hearing were read in its entirety during the regular session of April 3, 2024. And with that, can we have our staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I brought the book, just so you can see it. So after your last meeting, you did the first reading, and just to kind of recap, what we're doing is we're taking all of the ordinances that make up the general laws of the city and putting them into a single document, and through with one motion, the council will create what will be the city code. The vehicle that this will be most readily available to the community is not this book, but it will be a hosted site on our website, and it is very searchable and very easy. And one of the chief problems that we're trying to solve is if you don't happen to have in your hand the most current ordinance that was passed on a given topic, you might be talking about the wrong rules. And so by going through and doing a legal review of all of our existing codes, this is a months-long process, so there's a complete legal review. There have been some court cases that have caused things to have to be changed, so this is all in compliance with that. And in about a month, when the ordinance would actually take effect, the code will go live on the city's website. You'll be able to click on something, you'll be able to say fence height, and it will automatically take you to the portion of the city code and land development code everywhere that it talks about fences. And it will have hyperlinks, so if there's something that references a state Oregon revised statute, you can click on that, and it will take you to that state statute. So it'll be much better tool for the staff than the community, and we're pretty excited to get it going. At the first reading, there were no public comments related to this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I think it's a great project and needed, very much needed. It's hard to find things right now.
All right, with that, we will move in. Any testimony in favor, neutral, or opposition? Counselor discussion?
Any more?
I think you guys did a great job. Thank you. I know it wasn't easy and probably not the most entertaining reading.
The directors had to literally go through every line of every ordinance and make sure that we had everything right. The attorney that worked on it with Unico did a really good job, and city attorney reviewed it as well, so. Stacy has kind of shepherded the program, so really pleased with it. Everybody did.
So if a change two weeks from now, I'm making up a date, needs to be made, how, what's the process?
That's a really good question. I'm glad you asked that. So right now, we will have an ordinance that might be 23 pages long, and we need to change three sentences in it. So currently, what we have to do is we have to go through a process to adopt a new ordinance to repeal the past one, and like I mentioned before, you have to make sure you have the right piece of paper in your hand at a given time. The process changes in that instead of adopting, you know, ordinance 3742, series 2024, on whatever, Painting Rocks: Purple in the City, which is the one I always use, and we don't, we don't specify what color the rocks have to be. What it would say instead is it would be amending city code, chapter 23, section 5, to read as follows. So instead of a 23-page document to change that sentence, you would probably have a one or a two-page ordinance amending the city code, and then when that becomes effective, the company that hosts the website just simply goes in, pushes a couple magic buttons, and then it's immediately updated when that becomes effective. So literally in real time, when there's a change, as soon as it's effective, it will be live on our website.
Is there some court cases coming up that might affect? Is there some court cases coming up that might affect?
Well...
So that's just what I'm thinking, you know? We have our code, and then sometimes there's a case that makes us need to change it.
Well, we probably change three or five ordinances that are general ordinances a year, I think. And so we've actually, we may have actually adopted something after this draft was put together. So if we have one that we've done that, then we'll have to provide them that, and they'll have to go in and make the change. But there could easily be something that we identify locally that says, you know, we need to make this change to the city code. The, one of the ones that you may be referencing is the case regarding camping in public spaces before the Supreme Court. Depending upon what happens with that, the current ordinance that the city has in place might need to be modified. So if that's, if that happens, if there's a new legislation that is passed by the state that says that we have to make a change, and we see that land use from time to time, we would then go in and go through that same process of an ordinance amending whatever chapter and section it is to reflect that.
And who's managing this, like the website?
It's UNICO, the same one that does our current website.
Any more questions or discussion? At this time, I would like to close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed ordinance adopting and enacting new codes of ordinances be read by, for the second time by title only, put to a vote and adopted.
We have an emotion in a second. Any more discussion? At this time, could the city recorder read the proposed ordinance for the second time by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, adopting and enacting a new code for the city, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code and declaring an effective date.
All right. All in favor? Aye. No names? Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, we have no unfinished business. We do have new business. The first one is awarding a bid for concrete repair projects. Sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Though I read the right one, I was just on the wrong page to go on to the next part. Can we have the staff report, please?
Mayor, councilor, so this is an annual contract award. This is for a contractor to be on staff with given unit prices to do some concrete work for the city. These are projects like when we do a tap, and we have to remove a panel of sidewalks and replace it after the new tap goes in. There might be some small, minor projects related with street improvement stuff, things like that. We got one bid. The problem with these contracts is there's not a lot of contractors of the size who want to take on this kind of work. So one panel here, one panel there, means you have to have a pretty slim staff that can usually run around to different places. If you have a bloated staff, you can't afford to usually run these projects. The goal of this contract is to stay under $50,000. Once we hit $50,000, we hit prevailing wage. What you would see is you would see a doubling of these unit costs if we go above $50,000, because you're moving from these guys who are doing concrete work for probably $25, $30 an hour up to $60 to $80 because of prevailing wage. So this year, you know, on your bid summary that you get in your packet, you'll see the 23 unit costs. These are considered the 24 unit costs. You'll see about a 20% jump in costs from last year to this year's, and that's mostly attributed strictly for material costs alone. So concrete has been brought up by 20% here in La Grande for just the concrete. So be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
This is just for city concrete, not for any LIDs?
It would be under the sidewalk LID. So many times when we have the sidewalk LID, though, just to work with the $50,000, a lot of homeowners do like to pay for their concrete upfront. And if that's the case, we'll let them do a contract directly with the contractor who either honors these prices, or sometimes if they get enough quantity, they can get a better price than we get for that project.
Is this a one-year contract?
It is. It ends on December 31st.
Thank you, Cal.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Counselor discussion? Motion?
I move that we award the contract for the 2024 concrete repair projects to G. Gordon Construction Company, LLC, for the unit prices shown in the bid summary.
Second.
Any more discussion needed before we vote? No? All in favor? Aye. Vote? All right. We are considering appointing a citizen to the Parking, Traffic, Safety, and Street Maintenance Advisory Commission. Looks like this position will go out and expires December 31, 2025. Is that a position that's just filling in for someone being gone, or?
Somebody resigned recently.
And with that, will that make a full committee?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. With that, I move that Will Anderson be appointed to the Parking, Traffic, Safety, and Street Maintenance Advisory Commission for the remainder of a three-year term, expiring December 31, 2025.
Second.
Any more discussion?
He looks like a good fit.
All in favor? Aye. All right, we are, our next one will be considering resolution establishing immunity for, from certain personal injury or property damages claims. A little bit. Staff report, please.
Mayor, helpful. Thank you. Let me give you a little bit of background and context. It's not written on your staff report there. Different ORS number first is recreation immunity. That's 105688. It's not what we're talking about, but I want to give you some background. That continues, recreation immunity continues to be challenged in Oregon with the most recent claim at the city of Newport. So during the 2024 session in Salem, some protections were passed for recreation immunity, but they're temporary. The definition of recreation now includes walking, which was part of the lawsuit before. The property provided, the property provided immunity includes land in right-of-way that is both improved and unimproved. So those things were clarified and denied during this, defined during the session. Those will be in effect until 2026, and a work group will be working on that next year to get that squared away. So the governor will hopefully sign a permanent clarifying language. The ORS that we're referencing tonight is 105668, and that's the one we're talking about. It's additional protections limiting liability from ordinary negligence claims. That was part of a Senate bill 1576, as you can see in your staff report there, in your council action form. So that's your context and description to adopt a resolution that will be temporarily in place until January 2025, and it will go away.
And hopefully, we'll have something to replace it.
Right. That's the plan from the state. This is a great example of the codification project.
Right.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Stu. Public comments on this? There are none? Counselor discussion? Motion?
I move that the proposed resolution establishing immunity from certain personal injury or property damage claim described in ORS 105.668 be read by title only, put to a vote, and passed.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Could the city recorder read the proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, establishing immunity from certain personal injury or property damage claims described in ORS 105.668, as amended by Senate Bill 1576.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Vote? Perfect. Union County Commissioner update. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, mayor and councilors. A few things. I'll be attending the symposium that will be happening on May 9 in Salem. This is the House Bill 4002, the amendments of Measure 110. The district attorney, spokesperson for the sheriff's office, and myself will be attending, and hopefully I will be coming back with a better explanation of what happened during the session and see where we're going to go from there. Also, our budget's coming up like everybody else's. It'll be the 20th and the 21st, starting at 4:00 p.m. If you guys want to come by and sit for four hours and listen to us talk about the county budget, you're more than welcome to. The doors are always open. We do have a special visitor tomorrow. The Oregon Department of Emergency Management Director, McMahon, will be visiting us. She'll be taking a tour of the fairgrounds with other commissioners from other counties and some fair board members. We're wanting the voice of OD, Oregon Department of Emergency Management, at the next year's session to have the fairs receive the 1% that they relinquished back in 2007. That would increase the state funding to fairgrounds almost three to fourfold. It'd be very, very valuable for all fairs across the state to have this. And so having her coming to see our fairgrounds is a very good idea, since our fairgrounds are kind of not in the best shape. And this would be a great example for her to see why this funding will be very, very necessary. On the back burner on that, I will be bringing up the wastewater project also while she is here, so don't worry about it. I will be mentioning that. The other update I do have is Morgan Lake Road. Have you been up there lately? The construction has happened, is happening. And I was up there last week. It's widening there. I just want to let you guys know that between the hours of 6:30 and 4:30 Monday through Friday, expect at least a 20-minute delay. What did I say? Yes, thank you. I thought you said Monday through Thursday. Monday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So you can still recreate up at Morgan Lake Row, up at Morgan Lake on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Thank you, Stu. Without any delays. But watch out for equipment.
Adding guardrails?
Yes, I believe so. They're widening it and hopefully adding guardrails on certain corners.
Yeah. The ones that people slide off.
Yes, the notorious ones.
Yeah.
Yes. So I can't wait to see the project, you know, finalize and make that, because it is a very dangerous road. And that's all I have. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Staff comments? Is there any staff that would like to make a comment?
Got some for you. The paving plants are open. So next week, weather doesn't look so good, so we'll be prepping a few roads, but paving is probably going to begin the week after that. So there is no designated order of roads in which we're going. You know, we're not going to put out there, hey, we're going here, there, there, there. It's going to be kind of opportunistic on where, where the, we do have a list of roads that are ready, though, and I will work tomorrow specifically. I'm getting that list on the webpage. It won't be pretty, but it'll be up there.
I have a question. So are we going to be doing anything about the chip seal on Getler, right by Bernie Park, that all is gone now?
We'll see what we can do. I did go take a look at it after you mentioned it, and I talked to our street superintendent. And that is a great example of what happens when somebody blows through our closure and rolls over the oil before it's set. That's why it separated, because it was, the county told us multiple times that there were people who blew through the closure, rolled right over the fresh oil, ripped up some of the rock, and that's why it's a blown part.
Oh.
So.
Girl.
Yeah. Obey the closures. It was mentioned earlier, Safe Routes to School is in their construction grant application phase. La Grande has two applications, and one was actually sponsored by ODOT. We sponsored the other one. They were actually, I think there are two and three, two of the top three candidates for Region 5. So we have our fingers crossed in hopes that we'll get it. You know, generally, when they release the results of the initial application, you can go down and see where the money ends and draw a line. If that's how it works, we're not going to get anything. But sometimes, just being Region 5, they like to get the money spread out across. We have a good shot.
What are the projects?
The first one is along the Greenwood Corridor. So fixing a whole bunch of sidewalks, ADA ramps, putting in a rapid flash beacon to cross the road over to where the kids recreate during recesses. The one sponsored by ODOT was creating a corridor from the eastern side of town to cross the railroad tracks. I believe it's centered on Cherry or Willow, where there's really no infrastructure for kids to cross the railroad tracks. I haven't seen their application. They just called up and said, hey, do you mind if we ask for more money for your stuff? And we said, we do not mind at all. The last one I have is an update on a, the EPA put out the new lead and copper rule, and as part of the lead and copper rule, we have to do the, as a city, a service line infrastructure. So any line on the water side that leads from the main in the street to the house, we have to get visible inspection on what that line is made out of.
Every single line?
Every single line. And we said, you know, hey, we know pretty much everything from the street to the meter. That's fine. And they said, no, you get to go on private property, and you need to figure out what the material is from the meter to the house, which we have no records of. So if you haven't gotten your water bill yet this month, there was a survey inside your water bill that asked for some information on, and a picture of your service line inside your house so that we can put it into the database to submit later on. If you receive your bill electronically, you should be receiving an email later this week with a form-filled survey. If you return it, we just put it in the database, and then we'll see how the process goes from there. But the inventory is due to the state health authority October 16th, so.
This might be a dumb question, but isn't the line under the ground? And if you purchase that hole, how do you know?
So they have you either go into the crawl space basement or anywhere where you can see the service line protrude into the structure and take a picture of it. If you have any receipts or anything from when it was installed, that's helpful. But yeah, that's some of the problems. The other problem we're running into is that we do have an elderly population that does not crawl in crawl space, so.
Or are afraid of spiders.
Or have to be really old.
There's been a few issues that go through. So we also have contact information. They can call us. We do try and problem solve and make it as easy as possible for everybody, so.
Would you know, like in a subdivision, what they used there that kind of helped you all in your survey?
So one of the exclusions is if the structure is built after 1985, we know that it does not have any lead in it, unless you had a contractor, of course, stalked it for years and then just decided to pull it out. But we're not going to go that direction.
So you want a picture of how it is attached to your house?
Yeah, as it comes through the foundation wall, you can usually see the pipe, identify what the material is.
But only if you cut a hole in your wall.
Just take a picture of it, yeah.
We don't have a crawl space underneath. We have no way of getting down there to see.
Oh, you have a cement slab?
Yeah.
I would just take a picture where it comes up through the slab, then, at any point, under your kitchen sink, in your bathroom, any of those.
I'm not going into your house exactly.
Well, that would be if it's sub-slab, and it's coming up into where your sink is. That's the material that we can assume they used under the slab.
Okay.
So we're good there. Yep, thank you.
That's a good ask.
Thank you, Cal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Last month, I mentioned to you that we were going to do our Drug Take Back event, and we did that this past Saturday. Again, it was very successful. And I'll share with you just some information. I talk a lot about that program, but I think it's very successful. So since we've been doing that, the police department has collected about two and a half tons of total drugs and to be able to safely dispose of. We've also started to collect information from our partners within the community that have drop boxes, Safeway, Red Cross Drug, Grand Ron Hospital. And last year in 2023, I mean, we're talking about 600 pounds from those partners combined. So I think it's an overwhelming success. And what we have found is on the Take Back Days that we host, both spring and fall, we're not getting as much weight in those that we used to. But I truly believe that it's because we have more options available for people, and it's more convenient, because, you know, you can get rid of your unwanted, unneeded, or expired medications anytime. And there's envelopes that can be picked up here in La Grande at the library and looking at Carrie, can't remember where else there might be. You can pick them up at the police department as well, but lots of options. So very successful. You can pick them up at the police department as well, but lots of options, so very successful. Uh, I also wanted to share with you that I too will be going to Salem, uh, to listen in on the House Bill 4002, uh, discussion. But in case you haven't seen it in, in the news, um, with the passage of, of that House bill, uh, small amounts of drugs will again be a criminal offense beginning September 1st of this year. Uh, so there will, there will be criminal penalties. Uh, a lot of what the discussions are right now are around what we're talking about is deflection programs, and those are left county to county to determine in terms of what that might look like. The theory is, uh, if a police officer has contact with an individual who is in possession of drugs, uh, you might have a fork in the road, if you will, instead of just an automatic pathway to jail. It could be deflecting that person to a sobering center, a detox facility, something like that, which we don't have any of that as we sit here and speak right now. But, uh, I know county officials are working real hard and paying attention to what other counties are doing so that someday we may. So anyway, more to come on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more staff comment? Nope. City manager comment?
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Budget. The budget hearings will start on Monday, May 13th, at the Colleen Johnson Room at the Cook Memorial Library. So on the first night, we'll be covering urban renewal, and, uh, the budget committee will, uh, be asked to approve that budget, and then we'll go immediately into the city's budget and do a presentation. There'll be no public comments on the city budgets until Tuesday night. Of course, the hearings, uh, will be, uh, broadcast just as the council meetings are, and, um, individuals are encouraged to attend and provide feedback to the budget committee on the proposed budget. And so on Tuesday night, we'll finish the presentation on the proposed budget here. Public comments on the city's general fund, which is police, fire, parks and rec, library. Uh, there'll be a vote on the general fund, and then we'll move into the enterprise funds, water, sewer, street, stormwater, and a vote on those. And then, uh, hopefully we can get that done in, uh, two nights, but if not, we'll continue it to the 15th in the evening. And then in June, the budget will come to the city council for adoption at your regular meeting. So that's been a significant, uh, undertaking, and the mayor mentioned kind of at the beginning, uh, the facilities tour that the, uh, budget committee attended. Uh, I think we have the majority of the budget committee and the majority of the council were able to attend, and, uh, was, uh, again, the, we had a reporter from the Observer that attended the entire day, and, uh, we did not talk specifics about the proposed budget. We just simply were identifying what some of the facilities are that the city has, uh, like, pretty sure that there's only maybe two members of the council and budget committee that had ever actually been to the wastewater treatment plant. And it's really kind of important to be able to put in context of what these things are, because we do have some pretty significant budgets, and being able to actually see when we're talking about replacing a well, you know, that's just not one of those things with the rocks around it with the crank that you see in the decorative, uh, thing. It's a pretty significant undertaking, uh, to replace a well. It's a million-dollar project. So not that we're proposing to do one this year, but, uh, so really appreciate it again, all of the participation. And I think what we'll likely do is do one of those about every two years, uh, so that, uh, because we, we typically have a couple budget, new budget committee members every year. So by doing it every couple years, and maybe varying some of the facilities that we look at, um, it'll really keep the budget committee and the city council apprised of all of the facilities that we're managing for the citizens. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. City council comments. Any councilors have anything they would like to state or say?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, well, Mother's Day is coming. Anyway, so the senior center is going ahead and doing their, uh, Mother's Day brunch. Also, the Union County Museum is totally open for free on Mother's Day. And I also wanted to put a plug in, uh, tomorrow at the senior center, uh, both circuit judge candidates are going to be there to, to speak. So if you want to know a little bit more about them, uh, they'll be there. And then also on, uh, the 7th, which is Tuesday, the commissioners are all going to be at, at the high school. Oh, sorry, senior center, 12:30, uh, for, uh, for the judges. And then, um, at 6:00 to 8:00 at the high school will be our commissioners, all nine of them. Um, we'll be able, so you guys could, um, go ahead and, um, see the candidate. What?
It starts at 5:30.
Oh, I, I thought, I've been posting six. I'm sorry.
So is it, is it a debate, or is it?
Oh, they will? Okay, I didn't know that. I just know that they're coming to the senior center.
High school, what, what day?
The 7th. At 5:30.
Okay, 5:30, yeah, I knew, I heard the time, but the date I didn't remember. The 7th, yes, thank you.
Yes, I am, sorry.
I had a couple things.
Go ahead.
Uh, I've been, uh, talking to Cat Utopia and got some dollar amounts, uh, for trap neuter or release. They could do 100 cats for five grand-ish. So just to, just to put a dollar amount, if we're looking at feral cat colonies, that's how much it would cost to. And they've got volunteers that trap them. That's for, um, spay neuter, and I think they give them like rabies vaccines and release. So just thought I'd put that dollar amount out there. And then I've been going to Safe Communities Coalition meetings, and they, um, have quite a few things going on. They've been kind of ramping up. They lost a lot of steam during COVID, but they did a safety fair for kids, uh, last week, uh, that all, I can't remember the grades. Fourth grades? I was going to say the fourth and fifth. Thanks, Stu. Um, so, uh, yeah, that was, that was a big event that they did, and they've got, um, quite a few other things, uh, in the works, so, and I'll share as those things come along. That's all I got for, for now.
I don't have anything.
Well, I, since everybody else is done, I have two proclamations I am going to read. The first one will be for poppy month, May 2024, and poppy days, May 16th, 17th, 18th of 2024. I, Justin B. Rock, mayor of the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as poppy month, and May 16th, 17th and 18th as poppy days in the city, and urge all citizens to join with me in wearing the memorial and buddy poppies as together we remember the sacrifice of so many in defense of our freedom. And then I have one more. Uh, it will be designated as April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I, Justin Rock, mayor of the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Sexual Abuse Awareness Month in the city. And with that, if nobody else says anything, we are adjourned.